So, time is 6:30 on February 13th, 2025. Call the meeting to order, Sam Wood. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, we have one public comment from Mr. Johnson here. Can you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Mr. Johnson Senior. Address is 3818 Saratoga Court. Been living there since August of 1999. Quite sure all you guys are aware of the current situation with snow. Now, I've been there since 99, and I think it's only been one time where we had so much snow still sitting in our quarter sack area. And that was for like about three hours. And then all of a sudden, there was a big... In the south, you know, sometimes we call them road tractors. They go tractor for the big push thing because there was so much snow. So they came in and took care of it. So by the end of that day, the street was clear. I don't know what we can do, or if you guys need suggestions to... I don't know if this contract is whatever. But it's not working. It's not working. This morning, my oldest child was going to work and she's full of trouble. But, you know, this is my oldest child. The rest of us have... My white girl's a man. We all have different cars, which has four-wheel drive. She has a 2015 Toyota. So it kind of sits low. Now, I moved the car out the driveway and put it a little side so I could take my driveway out. And she... Next thing I knew, I had to go out there because she was stuck in front of the house. So I kind of walked it back and forth. And then I just thought, just take the man and we're figuring this out. And I texted the village president, trying to figure out what's going on. And one of the comments was, they're going to come back. I was like, come back? They never came. And then today, this afternoon, about 4 o'clock as I was driving up, it looked like somebody did come. They came and just drove. It was almost like they just drove like four car lengths. And they decided, okay, I'm done, and pulled back. So I took a bunch of pictures just in case.
That'd be great. Is that supposed to make sense?
It's there. I do know the last time when it snowed... Now, I know that sometimes when you have those guys that do the, you know, lawn mower, and they have these big trucks where they have wood panels and, you know, where you can throw the weeds, you know, the bushes in. I looked up one time, and they were going around. And I looked, and I was like, well, what is this? I guess they was picking... I was thinking that it was trash day or somebody was picking up something. I looked, and there was two men sitting in the back with one of the milk cartons. You know, those half gallon, those gallon jugs? When you cut them off... In the south, we used to cut them to pick blueberries. You know, we'd cut the top off and put a hole in it and wrap it around. But I looked, and they were just throwing salt. It's like, are you serious?
Yeah.
And it was remarkable. And the dude laying in there that was driving, he was wrapped up like he was picking woods. I don't know, dude. I was like, are you serious? What happened? And so I don't know, you know, beyond that, the fact that there's still no light out there, as you interact to my Saratoga Court. I don't know what we need to do, or if we need to find another contractor, or can we do another contractor? But this is not... And then it's going to snow Friday. And my drive, or my area... Everybody, well-known, my next-door neighbor, she has a smaller car than me. And then the guy at the end, he has a smaller car, so...
Can you just tell me, with all the snowfalls, has Sarat... I know the first time we talked before Christmas, Saratoga Court was forgotten. Do you feel that that's been the case every time we've had snow?
Every time.
Thank you.
Even when the first time we had that mixed snow and the guy was out there.
And I've talked to her several times about your street, and I'm up to here with this company, so...
Well, he... They threw the salt, but I thought it was going to come back and shovel. They never did.
No.
So the sun melted away. So they never did it. So I don't know what's going on. And I guess, in my opinion, it is, I know that they have another place that they deal with, but it looked like we're getting secondhand, and...
I don't think...
I don't want to be honest with you. I don't care about the motherfolds. My area, and there's a whole lot of elderly people. And it's not good. It's not good. I feel bad for them. I can do what I do, but I don't like this.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for coming in. I do appreciate...
And I can forward to the...
Yes, please do. If that would be great. And I will take note, because this will just be more ammunition for things that we don't know. If we... We may have to stick with them, but she's on my... Not agenda, but in my presidential notes. So it'll take a minute. If you want to listen in, Mr. Johnson, you're more than welcome to do it. I know you walked in late, and we had public comments in purpose. There anything? No, I figured. I just wanted to ask. They're new to the village. Oh, good. Yeah, yeah, okay. So can I have a motion to consent the agenda from the meeting of January 9th, 2025?
I will make a motion to consent the agenda in minutes. Second?
Okay, first by Stein, second by Johnson. All of this discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, so passed. So Leteria and I have a little bit of a laundry list of things to go through. So I'm going to start with just some things. And I apologize if I step on your toes. I couldn't remember everything. So feel free to speak up if I miss anything. Most recently, Attorney Kingston messaged me, and Leteria and I today, about the water and sewer bill agreement. We have sent Attorney Letme and the city two letters now with no response. I have the letter, if you'd like to read it, to Letme. I think I actually showed it to you. He sent it at the end of January. The city has not responded, so we are assuming status quo. Mark said we can't... Attorney Kingston said we can certainly send one more letter just to make sure, like, we're maintaining status quo. He said part of me doesn't want to poke the bear, but part of me feels like maybe just to cover our butts, we should just send one more letter. There's no way, though, that they can turn off our water, turn off our sewer, raise any prices without jumping through a ton of hoops. So I'm just going to move forward and just use my best judgment. I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to send one more letter just to go beyond not heard a piece. Some people might be concerned we don't have an agreement. We didn't really have a water agreement to begin with. And we're just maintaining the status quo. They're not responding. It's kind of a... And I just got my water bill. It didn't change yet. And they really can't just up our prices just for the heck of it. So just...
What's the committee that's kind of overseeing that, you know, with Brad and Tom?
They read the letter. They agreed with the letter. And there was nothing more to do besides our meeting. They agreed with the letter. They thought the letter was great. Did you get a chance to read the letter that we sent? There's nothing to report, because the city is just not responding. So...
You want to send another letter? Or you just, like Mark said, you don't have to poke the bear?
What do you guys think? What do you all think? Just leave it as-is?
If there was one, I'd say two, but since we did two...
Okay.
Did they send the same letter both times?
He updated and said, this is the second attempt we've had to talk to you. In fact, I've got it somewhere. Just so you're aware. You recall that I wrote to you several times previously on the village's behalf regarding this matter? In my last letter dated 12/10/24, I highlighted in detail the village's position and asked you to reply by December 20th, 2024. I received no reply. In the letter, I reiterated the village's position that it did not consider the agreement terminated. The city cannot force the village to become a party to the intergovernmental agreement. And that to the extent that the city would raise rates, new rates would not be unreasonable or discriminatory. Furthermore, the city would have to follow requisite procedures. I also noted that the village would not be undertaking an engineering study or cost analysis because the village was not amendable to joining the intergovernmental agreement. And even if it were, it did not have access to the necessary information. We're surprised that the city has provided no insight or clarification as to its position going forward. Nonetheless, the village's position remains the same. It remains amendable to updating the existing agreement with fair and reasonable terms satisfactory to both sides. In the meantime, I wish to confirm, as you have done previously, that the city will not stop sewer service to the village, which in any event could violate the agreement and existing law. The village's administration residents seek resolution enclosure. I reiterate the village's invitation to meet to discuss and work toward workable plan and updated agreement going forward. Until such times as a parties come to some new agreement, we will assume the status quo will be maintained as to the existing sewer service. Look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Mark Kingston. And that was on January 24th.
And that was certified?
Yeah. It's definitely been received, so, okay.
And it's not like those are dealing with pieces of communication. There's been communication over months.
Oh, my gosh. So we're just moving on. I will tell Mark to leave it alone. He just wanted to... He knew we had a meeting tonight. The RCICC meeting, which is the meeting where all the presidents, mayor, well, he never comes. Anybody not pleasant, dober, everybody comes together. Leteria signed us up, so they're coming here. Thanks, Leteria! No, next week, they're coming here. It was supposed to be in two weeks, but I was afraid I'd have a conflict if I had to leave to go on a trip for school. I'm the backup, so... So Leteria asked if they'd come. The date is next Wednesday at 5:30. All the... Everybody will be here. Good job, Leteria. She pushed me. She made me do it. I was like, oh, no! And she's like, okay, we can do it. It's actually a really pretty cool meeting. So if you want to stop in and just see what it's like, it's open to... They have a lot of different people, and I would love to have any of the board here if you'd love to see it. And we just talked. There's a roundtable discussion. We all share different things that are happening in our villages. And then we bring up, there's usually a couple of agenda items we talk about. You don't have to stay for the whole thing. But if you'd like to stop in, it's great. There will be, yeah, hopefully, a lot of people here.
It's February 19th.
February 19th, February 19th. Here, so it's a really nice way to meet everyone. Jonathan Delgrave started it a few years ago. I'm sure you remember. And I just think it's been really neat to get to know people from different areas and working together and asking for help, so... Also, Leteria and I met with the sheriff on a really cold day. It wasn't school canceled that day. And it was a great meeting. I did not anticipate it to be as long as it was. They gave us an entire tour of the sheriff's office. It was... I was like, okay, this is crazy. But they knew our concerns were that nobody comes to our meetings anymore. Nobody shows up. They don't give a report. Usually, we get the report after the meeting. I told them when our meetings were. And in fact, did we share the dates for all of our board meetings?
Yeah.
With them, okay. So they were concerned. I think they misunderstood when I said I was concerned about them not being here. I meant at the board meeting, not in the village. So he had this whole list of all the times. I'm like, no, no, no. I'm not saying you're not doing your job. We just are disappointed we're not getting as much feedback from you as we have in the past. So a few things that we learned in our meeting. They really have turned away from sharing major concerns about the public at a public meeting. For instance, the event we had last August. They really, you know, they knew we knew about it, but they didn't necessarily want to talk about it on camera. So they do offer that anybody that wants to call them from the board is more than welcome to call out there. Officer Jared is wonderful to talk to. Carrie Magical also wonderful to talk to. So they're more than willing to talk to us at any time. They don't share that list anymore with the board of like all the different things, like, you know, this is a security check, this is this... Because it really is private information, and they were like, we probably shouldn't have been giving that out to begin with. And they are spending a lot of time in the village. And he knows that our biggest concern is really Taylor Avenue, Miss Bean on Taylor. They're keeping an eye on that. You know, I brought up a couple of things. We just need to be diligent, and if we are seeing things... We... I don't know how often they'll come. It's not like they're saying they won't come. They just... There's not very much for them to share at a board meeting.
But that gives the community an opportunity to speak with them. So in my opinion, even when there was that incident, people came to me like, why wasn't their mask notification sent out? Like, when there's an issue in racing, you know, we'll get like a mask faxing they inside that kind of stuff.
Right. So that's a good thing to bring up to them. It was a good meeting. Like I said, I... We were there for like an hour and a half. I didn't... I did not need an hour long tour of the facility. It was great to see, but I just... I don't think they're not doing their job. I just, I guess, more direction from you on what you want from them. Do you still want them to come to meetings? If we have an event or a situation, then we can make sure that we have somebody on site if we have questions for the public or something.
So how much notice do they... Would they want, like, say, if something happens and, you know, in the middle of the month, and we're like, yeah, it would be really great to have someone to come here and talk to.
I think even if we told them within the week, it would be fine. They know when our board meetings are. I even said, this would be better to have before the board meeting. So I think, when did you get... Kendall, do you know when you got this from them?
That was last week. I think I emailed it to everyone.
So it's... If you look at it, and we have concerns, we just have to let them know ahead of time. Can we have somebody at the board meeting? We have some questions. Does that sound good? Okay. They were very... It was a really good meeting. I felt very like, okay. But I... They know I was a little disappointed that they just stopped coming.
So are they going to continue coming now, or...
I think it was more like, as needed, on a case-based basis.
Because I was just saying, you know, thinking if we have our board meetings and they know about them, and we happen to change something, we have to make sure...
Yes, I think that's still important to do.
So did they say why they stopped coming? Because they were here every single month.
They said most municipalities don't have them come in every meeting. They just come in as needed. And then I was sharing information. They did say that, you know, like, things are under investigation, so they really don't want to talk about it if it's, you know, under investigation.
Would it be some value having them come quarterly?
That was one thing we brought up. We thought that maybe it would be good for them to just come in quarterly, check in. But it has to be somebody that actually knows.
Yeah.
Like the last person we met that was like, I don't know why I'm here. Yeah, whatever. So let me know if there's anything else, if you'd like me to share. I'd be more than happy. I haven't seen you. This happened after the last board meeting. So if there's any concerns, or you... Quarterly, I can tell them the board would still like you to come quarterly. If you have different ideas, let me know. And I will certainly, Leteria and I will reach out to Officer Jared just to say, the board would really like you every other month, or, you know...
If we did it, if we had it like scheduled quarterly, and then we, you know, kind of published it, like, and I go, the sheriff will be here at this time. If you have concerns, you know, probably, if you want to come speak, here's where they will be there, otherwise, you know, I mean, always...
That's a good idea. I like that. What about, like, if something were happening, like during the summertime, and we've got so many people running around on the bike path and breaking into garages and stuff like that? Is there any way to kind of like get some notification to Ally or Leteria to say, put out a notice saying that these things are going on? Because we don't know about it until we get this, which is after everything's happened.
Right.
Yeah, I know. Check for homeless, we'll...
Yeah. And it's like, we've had car break-ins, and we've had burglaries, and we've had strange people. And I think we should get the notice out to people. Be careful.
Because they question it. Like, if someone will say, hey, it's what was going on, you know? So people will...
Okay. That sounds good. I will ask them both notifications when things happen, like, can you let us know ahead of time so we can, you know? How can you make that work for us? Can you do anything? Can we do anything on our part?
We got the neighborhood watch, too. And they have to be aware of that. And just, okay, they know what neighborhood watch is, and that we have to get the word out to people. So they can't just sit there and say, oh, nothing's happening. Oh, there's your report.
Yeah, right. Agreed.
And it's, you know, help us help you kind of a thing.
Right.
I want to definitely people who rise out of this neighborhood, so...
Do you not like Terry?
I love Terry.
Okay, yes, she's great.
She's a treat.
But I also like having it scheduled quarterly, you know? Just come on in seasonally or something, just so, you know? I don't know if they want to...
Also, you're looking the next month, too. And just kind of see what they do, like, how would you grow up to if they're...
One of the...
What they did. And I've got a real close friend that's on the board at UG2, just to see...
Yeah, ask them what they're noticing. They also said anybody that wants to go along for a ride along is welcome to. I was like, okay, not something I'd enjoy, but if anybody is interested, I'm sure Kendall's husband would also offer.
You bet I would.
No, so... Yeah. Leteria and I are meeting with Kapoor next Monday for Phase 2 of the roads project to get that off the ground. Leteria set that up, so we're looking forward to that next Monday at 4:00. And then, I'll miss the snow removal for last in my notes, but siding unlimited, you can also share. I tried to get here to get to the meeting, and Lou was done before I got here. So Leteria did a walkthrough, but also Terry and Jeff Klimick did a walkthrough before and looked at all the windows and made any notes and any concerns. Then siding unlimited walked through with Leteria, and she had all the notes from what they noticed, any concerns they had about the new windows. The major concerns we had... Shoot, you have your notes on this. The major concerns we had were the...
The weeping holes and then the block. So there's like a drainage system in every window, but they were kind of sealed on the outside. So the big concern was how it's going to drain. It's going to get the wood waterlogged. So they're going to actually run back to go through every window, and they're going to like open it up so that it's not a problem.
Yeah, there's supposed to be like little holes in the front, and they copped over them. I also had my dad come out and look at the windows, and he agreed. Because my dad used to sell windows for grand lumber. So... The other major concern was some of the... The drywall in where the big, like, in our, in the administration office and in the spa was not done great. They're trying to blame the painter, like, they didn't put in the drywall. So Lou is going to come back and work on making that look better. There is quite a bit of a gap, so that's something that we are...
Yeah, that's not the painter's fault.
No. No, he... It was a little... I was like, come on, Lou. So he did respond to all of my questions that I asked him. And I was looking... Oh, I guess he didn't enjoy the color. I just want to see if there's anything... There's a warranty, a five-year warranty on the install, so we have to be diligent. And I... Terry's pretty good about making sure to save us some money. So he will, you know? I'm going to make sure all the maintenance guys, but I'm going to keep an eye on those windows to make sure that if there's any problems, we're not past that five-year warranty.
Do you think we should contact the... Our tenants and let them know?
Yeah.
If you see any problems, please let us know.
As soon as possible, yeah.
They do a real good inspection a couple of times a year. Once, you know, winter's done, summer's done, you get through a couple of seasons.
Well, that's really what I want to see with these weeping... So Leteria, is there anything else you want to add that I missed?
Yes, so they did finalize out all the windows. So the gym was last, so they did that window last Friday. And then they were going to start the walkthrough. And that's, everything is going to be on the opposite side as far as the weeping holes. So they were supposed to start this week, Friday, but it's going to be changed to next Friday because of the snow. They're outside.
And there was one window in Shelley Space that had a screen already that was like, had a slit in it or something. So replacing that for her, that's already been taken care of, or it's coming. So, yes, I think that's great, though. Make sure we tell all the tenants just to keep an eye on things as well. Okay. Snow removal is the last thing on my list, and that's going to take a minute. So...
I have just a question.
Go ahead, speak.
When you have the, you're going to meet with Kapoor, how soon after that is the bids going to be going out? Because I think it's important they go out sooner rather than later.
No, I think that this is the next step to make sure the bids go out, because this is just that step. Or we meet with them and then say, okay, we're ready for the bids.
And are they going to put the bids out?
Yeah.
Yes, they handle everything.
Okay, good, good. So all our concerns are the snow removal. I should have made copy. I told my husband, or Kendall. We pulled some data from asphalt just to compare how much asphalt charges versus how much full-blown space is charging us. And, I mean, you can see, there's one from January 6th, I believe was a Monday? Pretty sure. That's a very... Asphalt used to charge us by the month. Full-blown space charges us by event. And like, there was one day, I think this was a Sunday, they were over here plowing, and we're like, what are you doing? Like, there's hardly any snow. It's going to melt. It's going to be 40 degrees this afternoon. What are you doing? I don't feel like I have a great communication with this woman anymore. Like, I feel like I kind of, if I say anything, she's going to quit on us. Not that I've been mean. There have been times that I've complimented her and said, it looks great, Dawn. I'm really pleased that you guys came back. But after all the concerns we have about the bills, and then we had questions. Um, Latiria had some questions for her that we worked on together and she knew we had questions about this large bill. She knew we were gonna pay the bill, and then she sent us a two-hundred-and-eighty-four-dollar late charge for not paying the bill within a month. Which I just thought was, as Kendall put it, a slap in the face. Like, we are trying to work with you and this is what you're doing to us. Um, last night, I, I did not call her about the storm, I didn't call her on Tuesday about the storm. I knew about the storm, but I, I feel like I don't wanna tell her how to do her job, but I also feel like she is not doing her job. And I, I've already, Latiria and I sat down with her in December at our meeting, as she's the one that runs the company. Um, I feel like we were a little bit misled because we didn't realize this is the first year she ran her company without her husband. And, um, she, she gave us like, I think she bid off more than she can actually chew. And she's not admitting it and I'm, I'm at the point where I'm like, I don't wanna talk to you because you're, you're, are just getting defensive. Um, I went through last night with Kelly at like, I don't know, what time was it, eight o'clock? Um, we drove around, I looked at, Lou was my eyes on Green Meadow Lane. Kelly and I were driving all up, we went to basically every area of the village. Didn't see the plow truck for a while, then realized it was here, followed it through, then it left. So, we kind of followed it, then we saw it turn, we saw it wasn't plowing Taylor, which they needed to do. And Latiria and I both had communicated with her that day, make sure you get Taylor done. You have to make sure Taylor is plowed, that is our responsibility, because it was a mess the last time and there was a bad accident. She acknowledged our text, responded what time they'd be here, she took it upon herself, it used to be a two-inch trigger warning. Because we were concerned about how much she was costing us, I feel like we did not give her the go-ahead to say, yes, wait. But she took it upon herself not to follow the two-inch trigger warning, so that's why she didn't show up last night until six forty.
And also, this was a snow emergency where these were just snowfall.
And, and so I was like, well, we never said, please hold back, that was never in our agreement. She said, well, according to your budget, I'm gonna just plow less.
And this is a snow emergency where schools are shut down and this is really a big issue.
When I text you yesterday, why were they meeting at two-thirty?
And, and didn't do anything...
It was gonna snow until three in the morning.
And didn't do anything else in the village.
Gives them plenty of time to come back this morning to do the school.
But didn't do anything else in the village, I cannot believe they were here and then left. And they came back at six forty, they drove by my house. Um, so I did flash my, my brights at him and got out right here on, and I, he got out of his truck and I said, you have to go do Taylor, you also have to go back into Green Meadow Lane, like, you have to hit these parts, you're not hitting them. And he was like, oh, she told me not to do Taylor, I'm like, yes, absolutely, that is our most dangerous area of the entire village. And there was already an accident there last time, you have to go plow that. And, oh yeah, I remember that, I was like, oh my god. So, um, yeah, I, I had, um, Mr. Johnson message me today, um, Tom Mills messaged me because Maryland really wasn't done at all. Kensington really isn't done at all. I do agree that they do one straight line, they did one straight line down Green Meadow Lane. The end of Green Meadow Lane, the snowbank is like what I would get off of my driveway, like, it, it was terrible. Lou took pictures for me, you can send me your pictures. Um, Latiria did call today Asphalt to see what are the, um, possibilities of them taking us back right now? Like, can we, can we, and Kendall did find, um, that we can cancel without any termination.
So, number twenty-two, you're back in, or the third sheet?
So, we can cancel, um, Asphalt was looking into seeing if they could take us back. Ernie and I talked last night, um, our former president, and, and said, um, he didn't know if Asphalt would take us back, so they just, they dropped Rochester, because it was too big for them. But maybe they'll take us back because they dropped Rochester, we're smaller? So, I was like, fingers crossed, beg and plead, please take us back. Um, the only reason we got rid of Asphalt was because they, people were complaining about them chewing up the lawns and dumping too much salt. But now, I'm like, that's better than what's happening right now! So, um, you know, it's gonna be, you know... Yes, I know, and I just wish this woman was a happy medium and she's not, and she, she never responded. I did tell her how disappointed I was with this late fee charge, I'm not even allowing Kendall to pay it. I don't think it's even, the, the bill for nine-thousand-four-hundred-eight dollars for one snowball, this is gonna cost us thirty thousand dollars, my concern, at least fifteen.
Just so you guys understand what's in front of you, this packet right here is the last three years' worth of Asphalt invoices. So, you'll see, they bill us every month and then they give us a detailed Excel sheet explaining every event they came for during each month. So, on the right-hand side of each sheet, you'll see the date, how much they charge for salt trucks, and then the total at the very bottom. You'll see the total for each snowfall, you can glance through really quickly and see how much they charges per snowfall. Let me emphasize that.
And it's not even nine thousand dollars, not any of those.
Not, not even close, right? And you can go through every single month for three years, you know there's some bigger snowfalls in there and none of them get close to nine thousand. Um, and so, that's why we're so concerned about these invoices that are coming in, that are at nine thousand dollars for a simple three, four-inch snowfall. And she's not budging at all when we talk with her.
Let me ask her, Latiria asked her two, I thought two very good questions. Um, we, we were worried were there double charges, um, when important areas are missed, like, they have come, they come back because they miss it and then they charge us.
Every single time, they had to come back.
Each time that it's, so it is requested for your team to come back out to take care of what is missed. Like, are you charging us double? Please provide a timeline of the actual hours crew route in the village, spending fourteen hours is quite an excessive amount of time for the snow removal when there wasn't a lot of snowfall. And I know she's accumulating all of those, but from what I could see, Kelly and I saw one truck out here for a good portion of the night and then a different truck showed up much later. And are those people also doing, I mean, nobody did any snowblowing. Poor John Leonard, God, thank God he did not have a heart attack, he was doing all of the, the sidewalks out here. Like, we gotta get John a gift card or something, that is just unbelievable.
He also was doing the part of waiting down.
Yeah, there's also known in...
That man, that man is too old to be doing that, like, I'm like, no!
Yes, and we, I was gonna, and you know, that's something we specifically talked to them about too, because they'll know the second time it's a snowfall, and so we said, that has to be...
And then even the walk up to the door here, when I was here this afternoon with Kendall, we had to do the public test for the election and they didn't do much more.
They didn't, they literally came through the plow and they didn't do...
Back there, they didn't, but even coming out to the door.
They did not do any snowblowing. And I, um, I mean, I'm at my wits' end with this company. I just, I, I feel like, I wish she would've just said in December, I didn't realize how big your village was and how much it would take. We don't have the manpower, we're gonna step out and, like, until you guys find somebody, but she won't admit it and I, I was just, like, I'm sorry lady, you can't handle us.
We're hoping tomorrow, I spoke with Jessica, she's gonna do operations today.
For what we spent, she bought her own truck.
Oh yeah, Terry actually brought that up.
Terry was like, what, Terry?
Well, I know you will, I'll sit next to you.
I'll pull salt off the bed.
I can see you back.
So, um, so I had to... I do, I don't like to bring in Ernie, but I, you know I'd bring him in because he's got a little bit more experience, plus being in construction, he, he gets some of this a little bit more than I do. And he, um, he just wanted to know, like, he agreed that their billing system is terrible. This does not tell us enough information to show, and Kendall's brought that up, you're looking at Lou and like, yeah, Kendall, that's agree, I agree. It needs to be more justified, and so he and I are working, um, together. My hope is that Asphalt gets back to, can we make sure you call them in the morning tomorrow, I would say by ten o'clock.
Yeah, especially because we have a storm tomorrow, and they were really here, um, sent them back with us before, so I'm just hoping it's a good answer.
Okay, so fingers crossed, um, Kendall, if they do... Let's say Asphalt says, yes, we can come back. Do we have to vote tonight?
No, we probably have to have a special meeting, new contract.
Okay.
But you only need four people.
Okay. If that's the case, I teach tomorrow until three forty-five. Is anybody not available to meet with me if we have to vote on this quick and then?
I'm free, I can be free.
I ca, I can't be here until at least before four. Linda, are you around, you're working? Okay, are you around Mark? Laura, are you around at all? Okay, Brian? Okay, so I will let you know, or I will have Kendall send out a text message, if we get, Asphalt says, we will take you back. We may have to have a special meeting for ten minutes or less to vote on it and then let full-blown, I, that's my, I, I just don't know when, we can't vote on it until we know, so...
They can have same terms?
But that's what we're asking for, is, they bid out for us already, they bid, we were gonna ask if we could apply the exact same bid that they gave us and do.
Lock in those prices.
So...
Cause then, we're gonna have a storm tomorrow, I mean, do we have a special meeting to approve it? And then just call full-blown and say, no, don't come out, we've got Asphalt, just kind of like coming right in.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so...
So, do we ask?
And hopefully this is not, not gonna happen, but that would be like, best case scenario, I really hope it happens. Even if I did, yeah, I just...
Do you think she's gonna push back, since we did send to your contract? So, we're, and that clears it, there's no, there's no questionable, that you're not willing to be rid of it?
It's just performance, so we can cancel it.
That's where we get sure, so we have evidence of this.
I think with, the whole village, we got how many people in the village?
So, actually... Ernie was also helping me draft a letter, just to let her know things like, uh, village generated reports, info that indicate discrepancy in billing hours. I think just the fact that we don't know, we don't have enough information in the bills to tell us that this is actually accurate. Unprofessional behavior, such as the guy throwing salt from the truck by hand. The fact that we have given her a map and talked to her twice and explained different things, and they're still missing things like Saratoga Court, Kensington Court. They missed Green Meadow Lane, that was partly our fault the first time, but they still are doing a terrible job. Um, they missed Taylor Complex, they missed certain parts of the Taylor Complex.
And they're just not completing the project, um, I went down with my daughter this morning, they did one side and it was like ten feet.
They would have issues before.
I mean, it was a mess, that's terrible.
We had an issue on tree lane, too.
Um, mail delivery is even being impacted by, because they're not getting in close enough to the mailbox. Our mailbox, um, the carrier has to get out of the truck and walk it, yeah, into the mailbox. And I told them, I was out there, I said, I don't know why they haven't, oh, it seems, it just makes it a little bit different, you know, difficult, but he's just, look at the mail out. Yeah, you know, he's got a good attitude, he does. But here too, I'm looking at this cancellation of number twenty-two, if they have any kind of kickback on that, it says, they can terminate the contract in whole or part without penalty due. And it's just, it's a failure of the vendor or the contractor to comply with the terms, which is giving us a bill. The performance, which has been terrible, and any specifications of the contract, I mean, um, I think it's, it's very, you know, very, it's spelled out right there. And Mr. Johnson, we just want you to know, you're not the only one that's, the problem.
I'm actually surprised I didn't get more phone calls last night.
I, I love Asphalt, they were real kind and friendly and they was taking care of it, they were about the best I ever seen.
Well, whenever you call me, you're always kind and friendly, so I always...
No, I was saying Asphalt was...
I know, but whenever you call me, there's some people aren't so nice.
I know it's not you. I watched that one.
You're in my phone now, I know, that's who's calling, like, oh!
Your first name come up when I see it today.
Um, okay, so, I'm gonna keep moving, that's okay? Okay, um, trustee Hinkle, anything to report? Trustee Johnson, anything to report? Trustee Ruth?
Nope, not at this time.
Trustees Stein?
Presenting.
Trustees Judy?
Uh, for events, we did put a post up on social, uh, and LinkedIn for request for vans. There was some comments on the Facebook, so, if you want to take a look at that. And I'm here, I have your email address on there for contact. If you see, you can pop in the future.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Um, trustee Whitaker?
Um, no, I do have a list of vans that, from my, the Mount Pleasant, and you, and, I mean, I don't know, you know, you got different pricing and everything.
Yeah.
Do you wanna take a look at it?
Okay, I know you have a lot, administrator Shaw?
Yes, so I will start with the occupancy permits, so Building Two and Building Five, uh, both businesses need to get occupancy permits recently, so, uh, we hired RSC LifeShave, in front of our comments, to go in and take care, uh, like, some things in the kitchen in Building Five and then some outlets and things like that. And then Building Five had to get all the doorknobs, um, to that inspection. Building Two already passed and then, uh, there's this way, one of them, they can build the five, and they had some issues, but they, they had to, um, take care of it on their own, because they built a stage with electrical, so some things were our responsibility and some were theirs, so, um, those are pretty much good to go. Um, I'm excited about having them. And then, I have to work on a gazebo, like, getting quotes for that, I did it through Millers, and I do have some paperwork too. Now there...
I got a gag for you.
Yeah, so I just, I have some of the...
She wanted to get the ball rolling, that's all, she wanted to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, so, this one was, uh, the most affordable, they first started out with like a forty-four thousand dollar canopy, uh, and then they moved it down. So, once we go look at some of that.
I mean, I basically have this over my hot tub.
Oh, so you're gonna build it for us?
I have a guy that did Lou's, I did mine, I did my fence and does all kinds of stuff.
All good.
Yeah, it all, maybe with material, maybe he might charge to you.
Really, okay, that's one's very...
Maybe I'm gonna pass my plug.
Yeah, I'm not saying this is still expensive, the last quote, so...
She was just getting the ball rolling, I was like...
And then Lou, what they did, look at my windows, they said they do work on that as well, but I don't think that'd be better than what you have, Brian. So, um, yeah, we can do that, actually. So, I'm excited about that for the springtime, um, getting a nice gazebo, I think that'd be a really good addition to property and we can rent people outside who are in the space, so, that'll be nice. Then, uh, for kitchen, it's quite expensive and, um, honestly, yeah, I'm a little concerned just because we went through a lot of funds for the storm removal. So, hopefully we can, uh, still do this project, you know, if everything goes well tomorrow and, um, we don't have to dip into any other funds. So, that's still happening for Building Five, they did report that the dishwasher wasn't working, uh, so they just reported it to me. But I'm just hoping to get a whole new kitchen in there.
What are they, what are the plans for that?
We...
Kitchen Five?
Yeah, what are they planning to do, what do they want?
They want us to update their kitchen. And, I'm having a really hard time just updating their kitchen.
Yeah.
Um, they did, it's a lot of work, because that is kind of a disaster.
Yeah.
I'm trying to see if they'll help us out by paying for part of it.
We'll go do that.
And we'll do part, they'll do part, but, um, maybe we just give them, this is the budget that we'll give you and you figure out, you know, we'll spend up to this amount, you figure out what you want and note that you have this, this amount of money. I went and looked at plans and I was looking at something between like about five thousand dollars. Um, but like, there's some pipes in, in there that would need to be moved around and it's, it's a bigger project than just taking out cabinets and replacing them. That's my biggest concern. So, yeah.
Were you not here when we were talking about that?
Probably not, I don't think you wrote those news, it was back in October, maybe, September. So, I've kind of sat up, I feel a little guilty about that, but also, yeah.
I have a hard time getting the permits, but yet, they can't expect, you can't go into place and write something and say, well, I want you to...
Update my kitchen, yeah. But, um, it is, it, it definitely needs a facelift, but it's just a bigger project than I'm willing to just, yeah. So, Terry was also gonna look at it, because I think Terry was willing to like hang the cabinets for us.
He's been a really good addition.
He's been great, he does, he knows a lot, so, okay.
Then I was looking at the dates for the events of the year, we do have the tunes on Taylor dates set, okay? And then, I just wanted to like kind of look over things like the rummage sale, the Christmas party and things like that, so we can kind of solidify, um, all the events. I know that with the road construction, that we're kind of going around that, like the rummage sale and things like that. So, if we can kind of work on that, um, so we can kind of have something more concrete.
When's the rummage sale? Usually July, right?
Yeah, so we moved it to June, so it's a lot of July.
So, we're talking about June, the same weekend as start of events, right?
Yes, cause I just mean so.
Well, and it's nice when you're, you're actually happy, get it all done in one day.
Yeah, so I think the last weekend, maybe in June.
There's not a date yet?
No, I think it was, um, let me look.
They have those signs that say the third, third, uh, weekend that you put out, right, those, those signs we put out?
Um, they don't say a date on them, it just says...
Third weekend of June or third weekend of July or whatever it was.
No, just those ones just say rummage sale, I don't think it has a date. It just says Friday, Saturday, eight to four, so you put them out like a few days before, but it doesn't have any sort of date on it at all.
I just thought it said like third weekend of July.
Tunes on Taylor, yes. Alamo Park rummage sale sign, no.
But the tunes on Taylor, do you, do you have the dates for Mount Pleasant? He does, cause I have those.
I don't have it on me.
But you have them?
We have them, it's already there.
I have them, yeah.
It's either the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth.
Do they have those, like, bluegrass thing, but I think that's what I'm looking for.
I don't think they're on the same dates at all. We don't have them set on the same dates.
Oh, right, cause that's why we met there, so...
Yeah, so then, that's just something I wanna solidify, just work on this week coming up, so that we can just kind of have something more concrete. And then I do have a note here that National Night Out is scheduled for August fifth, but we wanna kind of stay away from that date, so that's another one.
Why? For, yes, oh, you wanna say, that would, would stay away from that date for what?
Um, so, Jen, something.
Oh, maybe for tunes on Taylor, we wanna stay away from this date for tunes on Taylor because of National Night Out.
Um, so, the word on August twenty-sixth.
I think that's what she means.
Okay. Yeah, so I just wanna work on this so we can just have...
And the, the rummage sale for servant is June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, because there's a Friday, Saturday.
Alrighty, so then, the next thing I wanna talk about, uh, we're gonna do the brick, um, on our encroard room in the spring, cause now we have snow again, it was clear for a while, but now we have snow again, so we really are looking forward to having Dr. Some Landscaper, we saw that. Um, and I wanted to, the thing, talk about just Taylor Complex, general building maintenance, just because we had things come up. And, um, if there's anything you can think of that we could be working on, because a goal, just because, you know, we always don't update for maintenance. So, we did the windows, the doors, like, so I don't know what you all think are next, they, they work on, the roads?
Yeah.
Are you talking about like the strategic planning? Like, Kristen, several years ago, we had like a strategic planning thing, I think you were involved with that, weren't you? Okay, and we all sat down as a, as a group and talked about it, and I was saying even to Kendall today, I think something that we might think about is aboard as, um, possibly doing some type of a little different update in our kitchen here. And the hall, or not, the, uh, in BB School, the bathrooms, uh, they really need to be done. And that's been designated as a historic site now, yeah, so, um, that won't be going anyplace anytime soon.
Yeah, it's not like that proactive approach, it's that reactive, so, um, it is anything you can think of.
That's wonderful, awesome, I just thought of that.
And I know, um, when Terry first started, John talked about having him paint the bathroom in this building, that bathroom. I'd love to, I wish we could do something different in this room, to make it look even better, I don't know, I don't know.
It's very racing, kinda jelly on you.
I know, we need it.
Push the brake.
I wish you'd think, like, even if we did the floors, if we did the floors differently or something, it would just be a little bit better, but... I wish you'd think, like, even if we did the floors, if we did the floors differently or something, it would just be a little bit better, but I don't know what we can do.
That's a good idea.
I don't know. It's like, ah. And you could try lighting. I don't know.
Lighting is always a good thing, yeah.
We got rid of the red. The red is, I don't know. Like, if you just paint the red and black, maybe they would update it.
What do we get, do you like? So just things to think about. So maybe, um, maybe we end up to an agenda item at some point.
Yeah.
It's just a reminder. Just keeping in mind. Okay, keep going.
So building one, we still do have that space available for it. It's been difficult getting someone in there. Um, we do have a therapist in building one, so it's kind of a quieter building and so we're just hoping to get someone in there.
Is that that singular office?
Yeah, just a singular office. I know it's, um, just empty before siding, once we had things in there, but they removed them.
She wants to say we're at full capacity.
Pretty much, though, I would say ninety-eight percent.
Yeah, we are. It's good. It's great.
Yeah.
How big is that office?
Um, it's maybe like ten by ten. Yes, yeah.
And does State Farm take after Conceal? Do they have a permit yet to get in?
Yes, they ordered to approve, yeah.
So they pull it in?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we move it in next like two weeks.
Yeah, I think March first.
Is there gonna be any more signage going up or is that?
Yeah, he ordered the signage. It couldn't look too big, actually. Because I went in and did the, um, walkthrough with everyone when we were looking at the occupancy permit, so. Because I wanted to meet them because they were in building five and it was like a lot of stuff and some stuff, when you look at it, it's like, what is this? So it's nice to meet them in person and they can explain things better. So that happened, that's taken care of very fast too, so.
And Neil, who's State Farm agent, is great. Oh, it's a, he's a great, it's gonna be a very good tenant, I have a feeling. He hasn't had any, he's had a couple of questions for Shelley, but I think being a business and having her space, um, I'm hoping all goes well. He did have a little complaint about the nail polish now, because there's like somebody does nails right at the end, right by his space. So he was trying to work with her and see if they could do something with that. So, but he's great. I think he'll be great.
And then, yeah, well, he did say too that he'd want to kind of be a part of the community here at Taylor Complex. So like when we do our events in the summertime, like the car show and things like that, he can bring things out. He gave out water, he said, last time downtown, to kind of meet people and just evolve. So that's really nice. I think we can even get the churches involved to, to have this. Um, so then we did kind of talk about the next steps for the roads, so that's next Monday. That will be working on that again. We did run into an issue with the mailboxes recently here. So I realized I had about six keys out of sixteen. So that's a big project I'm working on now right now. Just because I don't have a copy, the ones that the tenants already had and then the new tenants, they were able to get a key, but it's just, they put mail in everyone's mailboxes. They just put it wherever it fits. So that's something I'm working on. I did talk to a post office, they said about forty dollars, um, each mailbox, like to rekey. But I don't have a copy, so when people move out, then it's an issue, you can stay and get that key. And then the tenant in building one, she actually, she's been here for a while, I'm on con, she's been here for several years, but now she wants to start with her mail here. And so, um, really working on that right now. And also, um, that monument signage for each tenant. And so like when people come to the complex, you know, there's a big, um, like sign with all the businesses, so people can recognize it.
Are you putting, wait, we're doing that?
Yeah, I was looking at this.
Oh, okay.
And Neil actually gave me his, uh, the company he's working with. Not the State Farm, but the other signs.
Right, right.
Um, so that's something I'm looking at right now. It's just quite organized. Um, I think it's a nice thing to have.
Okay, with the forty dollars to have those rekeyed, can we put anything in the tenant's leases saying if you do not return your key, you are charged fifty dollars?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, actually.
You don't have to pay them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because you don't know where these keys went, they disappeared. And so, um, that could just be taken out of their security closet if they don't pay us.
Yes, that's a good idea. Because then we'll keep having the same issue.
Yeah.
So. And then, um, the spring newsletter, we go on March, March first, or first week of March, so I don't know if there's any ideas that I want in that newsletter.
One thing I think is important is, um, for safety concerns is having your house numbered so people can see it. So when you have the ambulances coming in, they're, they're kind of like slowing down, like where is this house? Um, either on the mailbox or on the house itself. I think that that's something that we could put out there and just say, hey, give the, you know, in an emergency, seconds count. And if they're, if they're kind of slowing down, like where is this place? That's important. Just something that people should think about, I think.
Yeah.
Um.
Slow down.
Yes. Remove stakes by.
Oh, yes, by stakes.
April first.
April first, I think we decided that.
Doesn't it snow, doesn't April first just melt right away and have a lot of this?
Now let's put something in there about the garbage, um.
Oh, yeah. Tired of seeing garbage cans like on Thursday, right?
Okay.
Suck your garbage can away. I mean, we gotta, at some point, we may have to figure out some kind of a.
Yeah, I've seen it, we've seen that something like that too.
Or like.
Yeah.
And then I know we had a couple of issues with dogs that they were having recently, so.
Dogs, um, there's one neighbor in particular. Does not keep his dog on a leash. And it's, he's gotten two notices now? Is that right? Two notices?
Yes.
Yeah, so if he gets a third notice, I think he's gonna get fined. And it's for.
What's that?
Um, do you know Laura, who's, um, right next to the duplex? Um, she's, she's wheelchair bound and it's, Ken knows this person, um.
Is it that little dog?
No.
No.
It's a golden retriever and he also does like work, he's a contractor, but, um, don't ever hire him because they're in a lawsuit with him as well as another neighbor and that didn't finish work, didn't, it was a terrible situation.
Matt Carey's, Matt Carey's running law right now.
No, I don't, no, his name is Weston.
Oh.
Um, no, not like, no, no, not like him. Um, so we'll put a notice in about keeping dogs on a leash when you're walking your dog, you can't just let them. And it's, I'm sure it's a nice dog, but what are you doing?
Yeah.
So.
Do we mention, you know, there are fines associated with not keeping your dog on leash or?
Yeah.
And that way, you know, even this guy who gets third notice and there are fines.
My biggest concern is, is he doesn't actually live there, but he's the one breaking the law.
So it's from out of the air too, so they don't have a fence?
No, they, he takes it for a walk and just doesn't have it on a leash. He just walks along next to the dog and we.
Is that that really old dog? Bigger again?
Yeah.
Okay, obviously, yeah, because.
He's a, he's a. He's the one with the van with the flames.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Just ask Ken. He's got stories, yeah. He's got stories, Ken's got plenty of stories.
I'll tell you the stories without a war.
Yeah. Um, okay, go ahead, Neil.
Um, and then the last thing is basically, uh, a lot of tenants are up for renewal for leases, but I haven't heard of anyone moving on. So just excited to renew the leases and just ask for.
Yeah.
So that's my report.
All right. Thank you. Terry, treasure report, anything for Kendall? Can I move on? I'm sure Mr. Anderson is dying to get out of here.
There's the printed quicklets recorded there. It's a new year, so nothing's over yet, except you'll see the snow removal's getting close.
That's about it, yeah. And, um, if you did not do direct deposit, it is working.
Yeah, it's working.
So, it's not Kendall's favorite thing, I don't think, but.
Oh, I love it now.
Oh, good. Um, all right, new business, border review and open dates. I would like to, um, set dates for the twenty twenty-five open book and border review. That you see, I forgot my name here somewhere. One of them, Mr., here it is. The assessment schedule for spring twenty twenty-five. Open book is on Monday, April twenty-first, from six to eight, and the border review is Monday, May fifth. Do you need somebody for both dates or just one?
No, just, uh, the border review.
Okay.
Then we'll need three people and then one of the persons will have to have the, uh, annual training.
Right.
But border review, that's, uh, for two hours and same thing with the open.
And then you just hang out.
And that's just me, just need somebody to open up the door for me.
All right, so. Monday, May fifth, Cinco de Mayo. Are you coming or you don't?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I'll come.
Just we need one more.
We need one more. Rock, paper, scissors. You wanna do it?
Sure.
Okay, okay, Kendall, Brian and Ally. All right, Mr. Anderson, is there anything you want to state?
No, no, just, uh, Kendall, make sure you get the, uh, the notices and for the open book and the board review, uh, no later, March twenty-fifth. Otherwise, uh, doesn't look like too bad of a year. We had nine sales in the village. Uh, one of them was in an arm's length sale. It was a bank sale as is, so the department revenue doesn't consider that arm's length. So we had eight sales and our assessment ratio came in at eighty-nine percent, so that's not too bad, so. Better than coming in at seventy-five percent.
Mm-hmm. Um, Kendall, will you do the training?
Yeah, okay.
So, we don't have anything to, uh, approve, right?
I'm sure approved that, so we're good.
Reassess it?
So we're all good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to say something more?
Reassess, is there an assessment coming up for the village?
Yeah, we're coming down, do a reassessment, uh, this year. And I'll send out the notices, it'll be the end of March.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize for having to make you wait that long.
That's okay. I learned a little bit about the village.
There you go. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Thanks for.
You're welcome.
All right. Next on the agenda, I need someone to make a motion to approve, um, council table. And we'll move to approve the council table. Okay, first by Ruth, second by Study. Session? All in favor?
Bye.
Close. I have it, so pass. And we are adjourned at seven thirty.
Three.